I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the West Bridgewater School Committee for September 8th, 2025. Please rise and pledge allegiance.
Yeah.
On the board. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic which stands one mission under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A moment of silence. Please be seated. The listing of matters on the agenda are those reasonably anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting will be livestreamed for cable. A recording of this meeting will also be posted on the West Bridgewater Community Access Media website at wb-cam.org. So first up, we have recognitions of new staff.
All right. We are very excited to welcome all of our new staff on opening day. Being around the buildings, they seem to be doing an excellent job. Just to ask our director and our principals just to provide a little information on each of our new hires. So, Smarple, you want to just introduce the district personnel?
Good evening. So district-wide, we've hired a new BCBA, Board Certified Behavior Analyst, for anyone that wanted to know. Elise Devly. We love Elise. She's already been on the ground running. She comes from a clinical setting, first time in a school, but she seems to be doing very well with it. We're happy to have her.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
And the middle, senior, high school staff. Mrs. Page is very busy over the summer.
Yes, I think we were very fortunate this summer to hire some great new staff. You know, we lucked out, I think, with some of the budget cuts in local districts because we got some superstars, so I'm really happy and excited, along with Harry, our therapy dog, who literally I might steal him and bring him home. He's fabulous. So, you know, Erin Sullivan, who is his handler, was out at lunch duty today, and she does a great job of going around the building, and the kids all love him. And I think that'll just get more and more once they get more familiar with him. But I can't say enough good things about all the new people, and I'm really excited for them because having such a large group, they already have a small community. They're all new to the district. Some are veteran teachers, but others are new to the teaching field, so it's a great group to be able to start together. So, we're really happy.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And at the Howard School, we have a couple new but familiar faces.
Sorry. So our staff are not new-new. Last year, in January, we hired Ruth Comahiva to be our school adjustment counselor, and we're thrilled that we are able to bring her back this year. She made a huge difference in helping us reach all of the kids that we need to reach, so thrilled to have her back. And Michaela Zukauskis, last year served as a long-term sub in 4th grade, and this year is back for a full-year long-term sub position in our 6th grade math class, and she's already off and running, and we're thrilled to have both of them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And at the Roselle McCollum, there's down.
So one of the shorter lists I've had in the last couple of years, but it's a great group of new staff. I'm really excited. They fit right in. They seem like they've been part of the community already. Sarah Bennett comes from another elementary school as a school psychologist. She's been at the door greeting kiddos starting on day one. Erin Doherty is a very, very brand-new teacher right out of college, but she's doing phenomenal. She took over for one of our retirements. And we have two instructional assistants, one as a parent in town. We're excited that she could join us. We have Evelina, and I told her I wouldn't screw this last name up, Sizmancik, and Danielle Demilo. So again, really, really excited for them to join us this year.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay. Next up, we have the approval of minutes from the August 18th school committee meeting. Is there a motion?
Move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion on this? No? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. And then the warrants report. Mrs. Lazardi.
Hi. The following warrants were issued and paid for the fiscal year 2026. For bill warrants, on August 7th, 2025, $105,410.71. On August 14th, 2025, $69,886.88. On August 21st, 2025, $207,769.70. On August 28th, 2025, $122,390.51. And our payroll warrants in August, on August 1st, $533,112.25. On August 15th, 2025, $531,766.31. And on August 29th, 2025, $530,489.64. As always, all warrants are public record, and once signed, are available in the selectmen's office for review.
Thank you, Kara. All right. Up next, we have the introduction of our student advisory committee representative. We have George Baroud, who is our advisor this year. He could not be with us tonight, but I understand that he did send an update, but we can, would you want to do it now, or do you want to do it down in the?
Do it later.
Okay. So we'll do it when we get to the subcommittee reports. He wrote us a nice update, which is great. Okay. Public comment. Members of the audience wishing to address the committee may do so at this time. Audience members shall limit comments to three minutes and are reminded that public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between individuals and the school committee. Personnel issues or issues that would violate student or employee confidentiality cannot be addressed during the public comment. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the superintendent's update. Mr. Bobble.
Thank you, Mrs. Ragannetti. So, school choice update. So again, I've talked about this information before, but we had budgeted 230 students put into our budget for school choice. Currently, we're at 225. There may still be a couple outstanding that have recently moved, and they're just not coded in Aspen, but we're comfortable where we're at right now. We're really looking to make sure we are prioritizing class size, and with several of our grade levels now being four sections, we would rather keep those numbers low than accepting students and possibly overcrowded. So we did allow some elementary siblings in, but that's really it, and then we took students in the secondary level. Grades closed this year, and the ones that are bolded are our grades with four sections, so kindergarten, grade one, grade five, grade six, and grade seven. Again, trying to maintain reasonable, good class sizes, knowing that throughout the year we tend to do get more enrollment. Our numbers have gone up. When you look at our August 1st numbers to our September numbers, we have seen an increase of about 20 students, and that's just through move-ins into town. We will, once again, go back to the committee in January for a discussion, vote. All districts are school choice districts unless they vote against it. So it has been beneficial for us. It's given us the opportunity for funding, but also bringing in really good kids into our school district.
Can I, sorry?
Yes.
How much do we get per kid? Like, what is the five-kid difference versus the budget?
$5,000.
Okay.
So it's about $25,000.
All right. Thanks.
MSBA update. So not much new to update, but just some ongoing things. We continue to have biweekly status meetings, both with the architect, OPM Gary Keith and myself, and with our school team. We have another one tomorrow morning where the architects will put out information, they'll show us some updates, they'll get feedback, and they're very responsive to the feedback, which is excellent. Then they'll take it back into their design. We have, every other week, we have school building meetings twice a month. Again, tomorrow night, we'll be having our next meeting. We are looking for a submission date of schematic design to the MSBA, October 23rd, so that is coming up. At that time, that's when we're going to have more of a cost-price analysis. So they're starting to look at running some figures. We don't have any firm numbers, but soon enough, we certainly will. At our meeting tomorrow night, we have a big decision. It's to vote on the delivery method, either construction manager at risk, or commonly known a CM at risk, or a general contractor. There's quite a few differences. There's some differences in cost, but there's also, with a CM at risk, it's usually designed for a more difficult site, which this may in fact become. We will have some phasing with the project, so that could be something that we would want to bring in the contractor earlier into the process. So that's really one of the main differences. When you have a CM at risk, you basically go through a process where you're bringing that contractor in, and you're interviewing the contractors before you start construction. General contractor, or also known as design bid-build, is when you put out the project, you get bids on it, and you get the lowest qualified bid. There are qualifications, so hopefully you get, you know, an excellent contractor, but that is now, that's a little bit down the road. So again, there's a premium you pay for CM at risk, and that's what we'll talk a lot about tonight, is weighing the pros and cons to both delivery methods. We've been providing some information on traffic analysis at the Roselle site. We're going to go back into that more tomorrow night. We're looking at the potential for maintaining a staggered start, so starting the upper school at, say, 8:00 and the lower school at 8:30, looking at what those traffic numbers would be. I recently did some data analysis and looked to see how many families right now have a student, if we had an upper and lower school, how many would that be? It was about 12% of the families in town of our current students. So we want to make sure that, you know, what we do in terms of a decision-making, and that's going to be really a school committee decision to look at start times, doesn't negatively impact, you know, the functioning of the school. Now, there's a lot of benefits, I think, to a one-start time, because now everyone's in at the same time and out at the same time, but we have to look at the traffic. With a staggered start, now we may have staff starting and ending at different times. We may have a long morning of arrivals and an afternoon of dismissal time and parent pickup. So again, the numbers will be helpful to another decision we have to make now, but I do believe it's something we need to have a decision made when we go to the town meeting vote, or at least an idea of the pros and cons, because it will be a question that people have.
Quick question.
Sure.
I was just thinking, with a potential one-start, would that create a longer day for kindergarten?
It would create the same time as everyone else, so yes.
So the answer is yes.
Yes. Yeah, from what they have currently, yes.
Yes.
It would also mean, I would presume, that we'd have K to 6 on the same bus. So that's something that happens in our districts, but something we would have to discuss as a committee to feel if that's what we want. We would probably have to add more buses if we had one-start time, but the duration of time that the buses are running would probably go down, so what would be the, we'd have to look, we've reached out to Lucini to ask these questions, they're gathering more information. We have a current contract with them, which will be expired by the time this starts, so we'd have an opportunity to renegotiate that. We've made decisions on mechanical systems, so we've decided on air source heat pump mechanical system. We have a sustainability and system subcommittee that worked through three different meetings and looked at all the different systems. We had engineers and civil engineers providing information, along with the architects and the OPM, and we feel that is the most cost-effective mechanical system. It creates an all-electric building with zero fossil fuel emissions except the generator. Another topic that will need to go in front of school committee will be the future use of the Howard School. It's also probably a town decision as well, but it will no longer, if we're K to 6, be a functioning school, so something in the future to think about. Our designer and OPM have been at the middle, senior, high school open house, and will be at the Howard School this week and the other open houses, so people to ask questions. They've got a model plus some information to hand out, and we have an upcoming community forum in November. We're waiting because we want to make sure we get as much information after the schematic design is submitted and we go into design development. Any questions?
Was there any feedback from parents at the open house?
Just some good questions, just some, you know, curiosity. I like to hope that when we send out newsletters and stuff like that, they're seeing it, but I think it's good for them to see it, see the model, and to talk to the architects and the OPM. All right. Mrs. Giannis, information on grant funding.
So recently, we received the Hate Crimes Prevention Grant. Well, we have preliminary approval, so that means we have it. This year, it's $22,000. Last year, it was $44,000. In year two, you could only apply for $25,000, so we got 22 of the 25. And then we're just waiting to hear from Desi on our title grants, the federal entitlement grants, so Title I, Title II, and Title IV. They were due today, but I submitted them last week, and hopefully, everything goes well with those, and we can start Title I on September 22nd. So as of right now, we're in a holding pattern. It took a little longer to get the funding this year because of federal government, a little bit of a holdup, but now that we're all set, we should be good to go.
And that's every year? We have to wait until we get the funding to start the?
Yes. Unless we have any carryover from the year before, and we didn't have any. Last year, we spent every cent on student services with, we went right up until the last week of school, giving them some extra help.
Excellent. Thank you. Our curriculum nights, we had the middle, senior, high school one here, which I attended. We had good parent attendance. I think it's always good, I feel, for the parents to live the schedule of their children and make sure they get to classes on time and don't dilly-dally in the hall, but I think they're getting great information from the educators in the classroom. I didn't know if any of the principals wanted to share any information, or I know we've got a couple of upcoming ones as well, but.
I figure I'll speak to it since ours is Thursday. I have that right, Thursday?
Yes.
So at 5:00, 5:00 to 5:30, we'll open up the school and the cafeteria, and I'll be there with Mrs. Comahiva, Ms. Saleno, myself, the school nurse, to just sort of talk about overarching things. And then 5:30 to 6:30, we'll run two different programs, so that if people have kids in multiple grades, they can do, you know, some time with this teacher and some time with that teacher. 6th grade, however, runs that full length of time running through their schedules. So if you have a 6th grader and a 4th grader, you're going to have to pick which 6th grade classes you want to visit, and then pick which 4th grade session to attend. It's the best we can do with our, you know, living, having a foot-in-two-worlds schedule. But yeah, it's usually very well-attended. We're looking forward to it, and information went out in the newsletter for times and scheduling, so.
Excellent.
Should be good.
Thank you.
The McDonald curriculum nights in a couple of weeks, September 18th. Information went out in the newsletter. I did put in there, and I hope everyone remembers, parking is tricky at McDonald's School. We always see Mr. Bobble, and I always see the parents running because they've parked all the way down Subbingstone Drive. So plan ahead, get there. We also changed the times just a little bit, so the first session is 5:15 to 5:45, and then the same information is 5:45 to 6:15, giving us that half hour in between. I didn't do that. 5:15 to 5:45, and then 6:15 to 6:45. Half hour in between to give families a chance to get back in, let people leave the first session, new people park, and our specialists will be at McDonald's School this year. So they'll have an, parents will have an opportunity to stop in, see the new art room that she's very proud of, and talk to the specialists and see what plan they have for the year. Spring Street is October 9th. It runs for an hour. Preschool's the first half hour, kindergarten's the second, and more information will be sent out in that newsletter in October.
Excellent. Thank you all. Just want to share some information and some updates. So last spring, initially when we looked at our capital budget, we looked at putting a capital budget item of a number of different AEDs for the district. Most of them were very old, eight to 10 years they range, and we looked to put that into the capital, which would then go to the town. We contacted the Plymouth County District Attorney's Office, DA Tim Cruz, and found that they offered some training sessions, and if participation was held in the schools, a new AED would be provided. So the staff and the administrators really jumped on this, and we were able to provide three different trainings for teachers, educators, and coaches, which we felt was incredibly valuable for them. And they were, they had wonderful trainers. They were not only trained on use of the AEDs, but how to administer Narcan, EpiPens, and some information on CPR and choking. So during those sessions, we had quite a few people involved. And then, so that allowed, allocated three AEDs, and then Julie Dietrichson, our lead nurse, worked with the town and the Board of Health to use some funds from the opioid funding that most cities, I believe, and towns are receiving, and we will purchase through that two more AEDs. So we have five new AEDs, you know, one in each building and two at the middle, senior, high school. So again, it was a good way for the school district to kind of take over some of the funding, therefore it didn't go back to the families of West Bridgewater. But a huge thank you again to District Attorney Tim Cruz, who grew up and graduated from West Bridgewater, so I always appreciate his collaboration. And then we, just an annual review of the Bullying Prevention Intervention Plan. I know the principals met to discuss a few things that they wanted to present to the committee.
So Keith, Mary, and I met last week, and we were looking at ways to better store any bullying incidents and investigation, so that, especially in the transition years from 4th grade, I mean, sorry, from 6th grade to 7th grade, and from 3rd grade to 4th grade, so that, you know, we have easy access to any issues that maybe arise, you know, arose in the past, and we'd be able to have a center place to store them. Right now, it's kind of old-school, paper and pencil type of information, so we're looking, John Collins is going to be making it a Google Doc, so that we can type right in there, and then it'll store in a central location for all principals to be able to access. The parent communication piece, which typically would get mailed home, we're looking to change to do via email with a read receipt. That way, it's quicker and more timely than the snail mail. So those are our thoughts. No language changes, just more the format of reporting.
We've kept that pretty similar from the template that was sent out many years ago, so I think just trying to make some more modernizations or updates.
Exactly.
That work well for staff and for families.
More readily available.
I think that makes sense. I mean, it makes it, I mean, it's 2025, so.
Yeah, we're a little dated.
Being able to share that information that quickly is important.
Yes.
I do have a couple of compliance issues for you and Mr. Bobble.
Right.
So some of the things in the bullying plan, thank you, Mrs. Page, the annual staff training, has that been done?
That was part of the, the Arcs Analytics training, yes.
And then there is the annual survey. I know last year is the first year that we did it.
Correct.
And so the timing of that, it has to be done by 10:31.
Yep.
So I'm, and you know, obviously, what timeline works for you. We don't want to inundate parents and staff and whatnot with surveys, but I'm thinking mid-October. I know that that information needs to be reviewed by Safe Schools first, and then I'd like to review that meeting, that information at the December meeting.
Correct.
I think that's what we did last year.
Yes. And what, and last year, we did the bullying survey, and then we did the climate and culture survey. I think I'd like to try to see if we can combine some of the questions in there. I just, I don't want survey overload to happen. I just get concerned about people, we, I think we had a decent number respond to the surveys. I think we had more, higher percentage respond to the climate and culture, so if we could bring up the information or ask those similar questions and put it into the climate and culture survey, I think it may be more effective.
Yeah, it's something to think about, anyway. Haven't yet.
If we're still, I think if we're still gaining the same information, but only doing it once rather than twice.
Yeah.
It might be more beneficial.
I think quality over quantity is important, especially when we're talking about, you know, a topic such as this. Did anyone have any?
We have six goals, let me say.
Do you want to tie with that?
Yes.
Anyone have any other questions?
Sounds reasonable.
Okay. So we do have to approve this plan annually. So is there a motion to approve the bullying plan?
There's a motion to approve the bullying plan. That's stated.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? I'd just like to, you know, possibly reconsider in December if changes are necessary following the survey, so let's kind of add that as a caveat. I look forward to seeing the forums, too, and getting an update on how that is going. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
So moved. All right, the crisis management protocol.
Okay. Again, thank you to Mrs. Page and the entirety of the Safe Schools Committee for their work. Every year, they're updating this. I think they did a lot of work over the summer to fine-tune this, to make sure it's a working document that is useful and informative. There were a few changes or really more updates made to it, but I think in general, it's fairly complete.
Any questions on this?
And it was reviewed by the SRO, and I think what's nice is his input is crucial, and it also directly goes down to the classroom, so if he's putting information in the classroom, the same information in this, these protocols are the ones he's putting into the classroom, so there's very little question about what is expected of the student, of the staff.
Okay. So one, I did have one question about bus evacuations. Does that include all students?
We've done every, K to 12.
Okay. Just want to make sure it's not just bus riders.
Nope.
Yeah, okay. That was my question. Does anyone have any other questions on the, no? And I know this is submitted to Desi every three years?
That's.
Or every other year? Or pending changes?
We submit, not this, we submit the, and I can't think of the name of it now.
Oh, the MERP?
MERP. Thank you very much.
The MERP.
The MERP. But a lot of that information is included here, and I know that over the summer, Julie Dietrichson, the nurse, has worked on the MERP to update that, to be compliant with some newer information about mental health, so they've worked on that, so we're finalizing that.
Good. Okay. Any other discussion? Is there a motion to approve the crisis management protocol?
Move to approve the crisis management protocol.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. All right, the middle, senior, high school online class proposal.
So in this case, I'd really like to give a lot of credit to our middle, senior, high school staff, educators who are thinking a little bit outside the box, thinking of more of the future of education. We had a couple staff members and the union come forward for looking for an opportunity to pilot teaching an online course to a small group of students this year as a one-year pilot. For these students, it's just, they can't fit this class, this math class, into their schedule, which can be difficult, especially when you're taking eight classes and there's no study halls, so sometimes they have singletons, that kids just can't get all the classes that they want. The teachers are currently trained, and it would be for the future, teachers would be trained in how to teach an online course, because there are some things that they need to make sure they're able to do. Funding would come out of existing budgeted numbers for online learning, which we already have currently in the budget, and we've worked through those numbers. In terms of how this would work, it would be an online learning environment, but they would, they'd have the benefit of having these teachers, knowing these teachers, and seeing them around the school, but we want to make sure that they're responsible, and if they have questions, the teachers will schedule office hours for them, so they would go, and they would talk to the teachers and answer any questions, but they'd also obviously be able to communicate online. be able to communicate online. We would want to make sure this is working and beneficial, so we'll be sending out a survey to them. And I think the major goal, and this, we looked to run a virtual learning academy, as called, a few years ago, prior to COVID, where different districts tried to run these virtual classes. And in all honesty, West Bridgewater really represented very well. There wasn't as much interest in some of the other districts, and the program kind of fell by the wayside. So that's why we have a lot of teachers that are currently trained. But if you know any student in college now, or even some of these other programs, they need to be proficient in how to take an online course. So I think it's important for them to have the skills and the discipline to perform using an online platform. So we look at this as a learning opportunity for our students to learn the process when they're still in high school, rather than maybe when they go off to college and they don't have that experience. So we want to make them successful. So we're looking to work on an MOA for this one-year pilot program.
Yeah, I like the idea of doing this for a couple of reasons. I know that, you know, you want to be able to fit as many classes into your schedule as you can, and sometimes you can't. And so being able to offer this math class to students who were unable to fit it into their schedule is great. But also the idea of when you graduate from high school and then you start in college, there is a pretty steep drop-off for independence, you know? And attending an online class and being able to manage your own time, I think it's a good opportunity to practice those, those skills before diving into the deep end of college that you've already paid for.
Agreed.
So Mark, it had mentioned a maximum of five students. How, how will it be decided what five students get to take the online class?
Students have expressed interest, and I think we know through the scheduling process, who those.
This pilot, they were identified.
Yeah. I think that's, that was the genesis for needing this, is that they, they knew they needed a full-year math course. Because in Massachusetts, to attend a Massachusetts college or university, you have to have full years of math. So it worked for their, it filled a need for their schedule, and it was going to be a helpful thing.
Mostly seniors or juniors?
It's mostly seniors.
Yeah.
So I'm a little confused by that. So why, if they're seniors, why aren't they taking like normal math for four years?
So I believe, Mrs. Page can fill me in, I think a lot of these, at least a couple of students took more advanced math classes when they were younger, and in essence, they kind of ran out of full-year math courses. I think that's accurate.
That's what I wanted to make sure it was.
Yeah.
That's exactly it. All right, perfect, yeah. And my second question is the part about the funding. So we already have an existing budget amount for online learning?
So yes, so.
I guess what are we using for that today?
Good questions. So.
Do you want us to speak?
Go for it.
So we put that in, we've been doing that for many years. We work with Ingenuity, and it really was to give students the opportunity to do an online course, maybe something that's not within our schedule, you know, maybe reaching outside of what's in our course, program of studies. The problem is, not the problem, but we have found that it's not as easy access to the instructor. So moving it more to an in-house, but structuring it as a college with office hours and those sorts of things, that it might be more beneficial for the student to truly understand an online course, because, you know, they are able to access the teacher in, in time versus, you know, online, sometimes they've had a little bit of difficulty trying to get a hold of them. But in, we, we have courses in our program of studies that aren't able to run because of, you know, the teachers and teaching six out of the eight, and this would be an extra. So it could be courses that we don't, we have in the program, but just aren't able to run because of the teachable sections.
Okay, so the teacher is compensated through some sort of stipend through this?
It would be a stipend, yeah.
And we pivoted to the Ingenuity-type online learning when the Virtual Learning Academy kind of went by the wayside, and so we want to make sure there was money available for that. And looking ahead of this, wherever to continue, it could be an opportunity to kind of almost go back to that Virtual Learning Academy, where we maybe will even find students from other school districts that would, you know, need an online course similar to this, but they're getting a, you know, a real instructor that's local. You could even do some kind of a hybrid course where they could meet over, you know, once a month or once a quarter for, you know, on time.
And we obviously would stick to the budget line, you know? So i-if we eventually were able to move that it's in-house online learning, it would just be the number, the amount of money that we have for the bodies.
Yeah, I, I would, I mean, I think this is a great idea, especially if we have kids that want to go above and beyond and get past what's normally taught. I think, to me, if the teachers are willing and the stipends make sense, but in the budget, then, yeah.
Yeah, sure.
I'd love to see this program expand if, if the math situation works out.
Perfect.
I'm sorry, is it, what's the platform? Is it a third-party software that we're using for this? Or is it just Google Classroom? I'm sorry, famous.
Nope.
For what we use right now, it's a company.
Company, okay.
We use Ingenuity. Yes, we contract with them.
Okay.
But for this program, I think they're using like a blackboard, like they do in, in college.
Do we, do we know like what the rough costs are per student? Do we have that already?
Right now, it's $350 through Ingenuity per student.
Per student, okay. And then what is the teacher's stipend? Is that?
We're basing it off of that.
Okay.
So that it's equitable in that. And then I think the MOA, you know, if this, for this year, and then moving forward, it'll be a.
Sorry if these questions are covered in document. I missed this on what we were doing.
No.
So I don't have any information, so I'm sorry.
That's.
No, this came kind of.
It was kind of quick.
Came together very quickly.
Okay. I usually try to prepare.
No, that's okay, yeah.
And something I'm interested in.
And I think the two staff, Mr. Hyde and Ms. Daly, the two staff who were piloting it, and they, like Mr. Bodwell said, they are trained, and, you know, that they'll be, I, I'm really confident in their ability to teach the online course.
And it, I agree, it did come up late, and it came up, and I think that's the teachers pushing it for very good reasons, because they, they've got kids who are very interested. We actually saw, they said, we need, you know, we want to get into this class. So I think that's the reason we're kind of moving quickly on.
The only thing, and once again, if this is covered in the MOA, I'm sorry, but I guess if this takes off, we just need to have some sort of structure in place for like next year. If 20 kids want to do it, and we only have 15, well, it's, how are we picking the 15?
Exactly.
So I can see it getting to that kind of point, so I'm just.
And we wouldn't, we would, I think we would look to always have it function as a stipend rather than a course, because what, what we don't want to happen is, you know, these online courses now cause a reduction in staff or needing more staff. So we want to make sure it's a benefit, but it also falls within the budget.
Yep.
So this is sort of a two-part discussion. The first part, which we've, we're having tonight, is just kind of this curricular discussion and how to run this online course. And then the second piece, which we'll have to have at another time, is the MOA and how to fit it into, you know, how to fit that into the current contract and, and what the stipend looks like and what the responsibilities look like. So that is to be determined, but Mr. Bodwell worked on an MOA, so that is actually what you have in front of you for future discussion.
I don't think they have it in front of them.
Oh.
Yeah. I'm like looking through the drive-by, oh shit, I missed something.
Yeah, so you didn't miss anything that is, that discussion hasn't happened yet.
Okay.
All right, we will make sure that is shared. I'll, I'll get that out.
All right, any other questions on that?
No.
No.
It's a great idea.
All right. So moving on, we have some unfinished business. We have the school improvement plans, which we discussed last month. We just neglected to vote on the school improvement plans. So if there are no further questions on those plans, we can make a motion and approve them now. So is there a motion to approve the plans for both elementary and middle, senior high school? For all the schools?
I move to approve the school improvement plans for all three schools.
Four?
All, yeah, all four schools, three levels.
Like, wait a second. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. All right, the updated middle, senior, high school student handbook and the athletic handbook. There were a few updates that Mrs. Page had spoken to last time. Do you want to speak some again?
I'd love to.
Yeah, they were pretty, everything that we discussed last time were.
Yeah, it was the fee for the athletic, it was the example for accesses.
Yep, and there was an example. I know everything that I had in my notes was in there. Did anyone have any other discussion on those items?
I just forgot to look. Was there a clause put in there about the communication by team captains?
Yes, yep, that was in there.
I meant to look it for that, and I forgot.
Yes, there was, there was a statement in there about prohibiting. You got it? Okay. Just for anyone listening at home, prohibiting communication by, by social media, by team captains to the rest of the team. Okay, is there a motion? Actually, we'll do this in two separate motions. Is there a motion to approve the middle, senior, high school student handbook?
I move to approve the middle, senior, high school student handbook.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. All right, is there a motion to approve the middle, senior, high school athletic handbook?
I move to approve the middle, senior, high school athletic handbook.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Okay, new business, the agreement of the West Bridgewater Education Association Secretaries and Clerks. So we have that in front of us as well. I don't know if Mr. Bodwell or Mrs. Lusler already want to speak to that a little bit before we.
Sure, I don't mind speaking to it.
Well, actually, before you do, I'm going to make a motion to approve the West Bridgewater Education Association Secretary and Clerks, CBA. Is there a second?
Memorandum of.
Memor-, oh, because we're not, we haven't, right, thank you for that. So I make a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement for the WBEA Secretaries and Clerks. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion, go ahead.
So the personnel subcommittee, which is Perry and myself, met with Mr. Bodwell and other members of admin, in addition to the crew from the WBEA Unit B. Negotiations went really well, I think, it, it was two meetings?
Mm-hmm.
Two meetings, and I think everyone was really pleased with how things turned out. Do you want me to go over some specific changes, or?
I reviewed it, so I don't have any questions or anything.
Anyone have any questions?
Specific, I think it was all pretty standard.
It was.
Just advancement of, of salary. I know there was the increase, slight increase of longevity, but nothing, no major other substantive changes in there. Did anyone have any other?
Thank you for all your work on up and creating and updating the MOA, so thank you.
Of course.
All right, anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Okay, homeschool requests, Mrs. Marvel.
There you go. So we did review a few, we did receive a few applications, and I have reviewed them. They do align with our district's policy, so I recommend that you approve them.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the homeschool requests as presented to us?
Move to approve the homeschool request as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion? No? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Thank you.
Okay, superintendent goals, Mr. Bodwell.
All right, I want to, I've shared with you my four goals, the goal statement plus information, some timeline information. I always feel it's important to have goals, be it my goals, the administrative goals, aligned with what the district is looking to do and the educators, and I've shared this information also with them on opening day. So the first goal, so two of them are district improvement goals, and one's a student learning, one's a professional practice goal. So the first goal, I'm not going to read through everything, but you do have it, but it definitely has to, it's a continuation of the goal from last year in terms of the elementary school building project. There are a lot of things that will be ongoing, such as the meetings that are being held, some of them I've obviously updated tonight, but things that need to be done in terms of public relations, but also planning for the future. It's also, I feel, very important for the success of the project to provide regular updates at school community meetings, through district newsletters, at coffee hours, through emails, and through community forums, and any other informational meetings, so those are ongoing. Meeting monthly with, and it's, it's usually way more than monthly, usually it's probably daily, but building administrators, central office administrators, Director of Food Services, School Resource Officer, and Director of Maintenance are related to the building projects. We're really looking at what is best and meets the needs. And really, I put it into the, I think, the original goals, but should be, also be staff, because we're continuing to meet with staff, we're also continuing to involve them as much as possible. Completing all required paperwork for the project, such as posting agendas, sending out meeting minutes, presentations, and all MSBA work. Very often, we will get information requested by our designer or OPM, and again, I give a ton of credit to our administrative team, because they're usually a quick response time when we need information or feedback. They've been excellent at that. And lead us through Module Four, which is schematic design and into design development. So there's a lot of, you know, moments in time, things that need to be completed as we move through the process. Continue on. The second goal has to do with instructional leadership. Again, somewhat of a continuation of some of the information from last year, a more frequent opportunity to do administrative walkthroughs, a minimum of four walkthroughs per administrator in each of the buildings, but I will be honest, it's going to be more than that. But I think having those are important, because I have the form, which I'll be using, which will provide feedback, and also it's important to get it back to them in a timely manner, but also to provide reflection on that. So they're getting, I'll be able to track how they're doing, how they're, they're meeting the standards, but also provide feedback for discussion. Meeting at least twice a month with the administrators and then other members of central office and other directors to make sure, meetings in my office, or often it's meetings kind of in the field, or it's in the school, down in maintenance, down in the food service area, to check on how things are going. Kind of part of this is working on a professional development plan, which is essential, and our PD committee, I think we've had a number of professional development opportunities rolled in from our teachers this year. At a future meeting, Mrs. Yanis is going to share those professional development opportunities that staff have signed up for. I think they're rigorous, I think they're exciting for their development, but then again, that's also part of the instructional leadership. And then we get into the surveys, because that provides us feedback on performance both at the building and the district level, and also student level. So we'll be doing that by the end of October. Again, hoping to incorporate some of the bullying questions in there, so we can have one real complete survey that will hopefully have a high percent of participation. And what's most important is creating an executive summary that's going to take information out of that, what we gather, and then guide our practices and making adjustments to practice as necessary, because just, just getting the feedback is one part of it, but looking at how that affects the school and the district is of utmost importance.
Okay, before, are you moving on?
Yeah.
I just have a couple of, so you're a student-centered superintendent, but I feel like 80% visibility in the schools is lofty. That's four out of five days, and, you know, I think just can, just think about that. And I'm curious how you'll track that visibility.
Good question.
Is it a matter of, and, and quality, you know, quality component rather than just being there?
Right.
How do you organize the data? I mean, is it equal across the four schools? Is it, obviously, you're in the Spring Street School, so I would expect that that would be a little bit higher there. And so that kind of makes me think, you know, how much of that 80% is at the different schools?
Yeah, good question. So what I've done is I've created, I redone the Google sheet this year to list the days that I'm in district, plus each of the schools. So when I visit them, and again, it's visiting not just the administrators, but hopefully walking around the building, getting into classes, maybe going into the cafeteria, maybe being out at recess. So I'm trying, I'm tracking, I try, I'm tracking the days I'm in each of the schools And individually, so now I'm tallying that at the bottom, and I can pull that data. But then I'm also tallying days I've been in one building, two buildings, three buildings, and four buildings. So, um, I didn't get, I only got to Spring Street today, because it was a busy day. Um, but I did get out to, you know, a, a game or two. But I think it's important to get into more than one building and quality. So, right now, I think it's, I think we're on day eight. I think six out of eight days I've been in at least two buildings. Um, and I'll continue that. So that's the way I'm tracking the information, because I, it, it's, it's a good check for me, because I realize I can also see which buildings I've been into on which days.
Yeah, I'd like to, you know, just kind of monitor. I, or, you know, it's great that you're there, but I want to know what you're doing there.
Yeah.
So.
All right.
Um, I'm also curious how you'll incorporate the climate and survey, climate and culture survey results. Are you, are you looking to incorporate that right away? Um, you know, into feedback with administrators? Or, you know, are you going to set measurable goals this year? Or are you looking towards next year for that?
Well, I definitely will be sharing it. They'll have full access to it. And when we put it into, um, the, there's a program in Google that they can identify which school, the comments, and the numbers, so they can look at each of the graphs. And, um, they can use that with their staff and staff meetings, and it will drive practices moving forward. So, I think some of them are going to be more immediate than others, and others may be more, you know, planning for the future. So I don't have a real specific answer, but it'll depend on which pieces of data they're looking at, I think.
Um, and then my last question is just, it's, and it's more of a comment about the surveys. I know, um, participation was not the best last year. So I'd like you to just kind of consider how they're delivered. Um, I know we use Google, it's a Google District. Um, but are, is there another service that we could use? Is there an outside, um, website? Is Survey Monkey something that people would be more willing to, to engage with? Um, just to kind of get the, because I don't think, at some point, one of these surveys was only like eight percent participation. Uh, I think it was parent, it was a parent survey.
The end of the year survey.
Climate and Culture or something. And eight percent is not reflective of the general population. So I feel like if we really want to get quality data, how are you getting that data? Um, how are you sending reminders? How are you, um, getting that out? Because I do think it does get buried in the newsletters, so.
And I agree. And I think we talked about putting it out on social media, using that platform. Uh, I think, I think the, I think the climate and culture survey actually had decent numbers in the forty percent, which I, but I'd have to check. So I, I agree that, you know, we want to get as high as possible. Uh, using, the good news is it's totally anonymous, so the Google does work. We've gone through to make sure it doesn't have to. You don't have to have a Gmail account, because that was a problem at first. So we're trying to make it as user-friendly and easy. But using social media, promoting it outside the newsletter, through emails, um, using the app so it gets brought on someone's phone. But I also want to try to, I wouldn't say limit the number, but be very judicious in the questions we ask, because sometimes when people look at something and they say, oh my gosh, it's so, it takes a long time. So, we want to make sure it's asking the right questions, but maybe not all the information. And hopefully that, we won't have that overload if we can combine the two surveys. Because I agree, if we don't get the feedback and the, you know, then we, it's not really representative of what's going on.
I'm curious, and this may not be the place to ask, but if you were to combine the two, the bullying survey, didn't that also go out to Howard students last year?
Yes.
Whereas the climate and culture was only...
Which grades were you at Howard for?
I think it was six.
Was it only six?
I don't know that we went lower than that.
Okay.
I don't remember.
And climate and culture, I believe, was just seven through twelve.
I think, I think Howard, I don't remember. I know you did it, I know it was guided. It was guided.
Yes.
You did it in the classroom with the teachers.
That's what I thought it was all grades.
I think you did. But they weren't independent in it. It was, we're going to explain every question with you.
Yeah.
So maybe what we can do is, because we have a separate student one, maybe we can...
I think your student participation was fantastic.
It was excellent, yeah.
Teachers were doing it in school. So it's more a matter of the parents, yeah.
I just don't want to lose that voice that they had. So, maybe have like a modified survey for the younger.
Yep, I totally agree.
Age level.
Yeah, so we can talk about that as a team. Thank you. Sorry, that's a good point. Um, the third one is, um, talking about listening to student voice. Again, it, it is, I think, a little bit beyond the surveys. It's getting, uh, real information from kids, real time. Uh, it's having, uh, developing relationships. You know, relationships are key to, um, you know, success, I feel. So, looking at having, uh, continuing my roundtable meetings at each school, uh, which would be Rose L., Howard, Middle School, and High School. I've always had the High School Superintendent Council. It's really exciting. I, today I was walking up to the high school, and a young girl stopped me in the parking lot and said, "What are you doing your student, your council meetings again? Because I want to be on there this year." And I was like, "Oh, that's awesome." I said, "Is it still in the main office to sign up?" Yeah, that's what I told her. I said, "Sign up there, because we'd love to have you." But it's, I'm excited that they want to come and they talk. Now, we do get back made bagels, so that could definitely be a part of it. But, uh, it is, uh, it, I get a lot out of the conversations. And even at the Rose L., I, I hear some stuff, and I've asked them questions, and we do some activities with them. So I think that's an important part of it.
So is it fully sign up for your?
So, for the middle, for the high school, it's sign up. And then the middle school, we, I think we put something out there, in Howard.
So it'll be the same kiddos who were in fourth and fifth last year, who are now fifth and sixth, plus one extra from each of those grade levels, and then two newbies in fourth. So, because staff recommend. I asked for kids who will talk. Kids who are not going to be intimidated by sitting at a table with the superintendent kids, who are just going to talk.
Sure, yeah.
And we want, and part of it, I think, is developing relationships with the students and trust. But we also want to make sure it's open. So, I've, we've never turned someone away. So if there's interest, uh, especially at the middle school and high school level, but also at the elementary level, the more the merrier. Yeah, we want to make sure we're hearing all student voices. Uh, I haven't sent it out yet. I'm going to share with Mrs. Page and Mr. Hannah, so they're, uh, on board with it. But I have a Google Form all created for our seniors. Uh, it's my goal to send it out probably this week, if not next week, to meet with them, um, find a convenient time for them. And they don't have privileges yet, so Power Block might be the time for right now. But to sit down with each of them individually for fifteen or twenty minutes. I've got some questions in there. Look, tell, tell me about yourself, tell me about your future, what are you looking forward to doing? But I want to get kind of almost like a, an exit interview with them early in their senior year, so we can hear directly from them.
Are they able to decline?
If they want to.
All right, so.
I could adjust my hundred.
You know, is a hundred percent of seniors realistic?
It probably won't be.
Some might decline, so you might want to adjust your goal there, because if it's ninety-nine percent, you don't make a goal.
I didn't make my goal. I could say eighty or something, but...
Yeah, or you could even just say to offer interviews to a hundred percent of seniors.
Perfect. Um, and I'll continue my lunch with the kindergarteners. We can start that soon, because that's the highlight of my week. Um, but I would also make, I want to make sure I'm hearing the, the staff voice, uh, which I think is also incredibly important. And I told them this at our opening day meeting, that I, I'd like to schedule a, a fall, winter, and spring, just a drop-in meeting after school. I'd have some talk, some talking points and topics, but then I'd like to open it up to them, hear what they have to say. I think it's going to be important back to school. When we get middle of the year, we're going to probably be talking budget and then end of, end of year. Um, I, I like developing those relationships with them as well. Uh, I'd like to provide updates to school committee, um, in general, what we're hearing. Um, I had a Google Doc last year that I created that I would input information from them, so sharing out information. And again, what, and sharing with the administrators after a lot of meetings, especially the high school ones, I would share with Mrs. Page and Mr. Hannah some of the things they're talking about, and some of their wishes and desires, uh, for, you know, for the school. So I continue to do that. And, um, again, looking to review current practices and procedures. And then finally, this one, and I'll be honest, I, I want to, a little bit of stretching myself and our district. I think AI is here. Um, and I think, like, many years ago, when cell phones came in, we talked about, oh, you know, or any kind of computers, how do we most effectively utilize them, uh, and teach responsible youth? So I think it's, uh, important for the district to really make sure we're educating ourselves, uh, administrators, our educators, and our students, and our families as to what is, uh, you know, effective use of AI, and making sure we have policies and procedures that are in place, and making sure we're training our students to, again, prepare them for the future. Uh, we have at least one AI professional development that staff are signing up for, uh, which I think is excellent. And we have, you know, we want to bring people in to talk. So, I think it's opening the door to making sure we are doing what is appropriate and best for all of our students.
So I like this goal. I think it's an innovative goal. Um, but I want to see some more reflection, not necessarily in the goal, but mid-cycle and at the end of the year. Um, I want to hear your evaluation of how AI is changing practice in the classroom. Not just that we did it, but how is it changing practice? And I think that goes also for Goals Two and Three as well. Um, with the information that you gather, how is that changing practice? How is that influencing practice? Um, and I want to see that we're not just seeing personal growth, but district growth um, with the information that you gather.
I agree.
Any other questions for Mr. Bodwell?
AI training, is that the one that's, who's, who's it run by? The teachers are going to do?
Uh, the teachers, one of the teachers will run it, and I can't remember the exact, what else they're using for. I think they're working on developing procedures within their classroom.
I don't remember the exact thing, but it's, uh, one of the, um, middle school teachers, that she was trained over the summer.
All right.
She took, she's such a go-getter, and she's taken so much on over the past few years that she'll do an amazing job with it.
Has there been trainings by the MACS yet for AI out there?
There are some, I think, through MAS. I know we've attended some in the summertime, there are summer conferences, and we're looking forward to the, the wind, the mid-wind, the winter ones and other opportunities. And Desi has put a lot of information out, um, on AI intelligence. So there's a wealth of information through their online site as well. So I think we can pull information from that.
Desi just put something out today, too, uh, with Greg Kulwick.
Oh, good. Perfect.
And just the AI literacy lesson for the students, is that something that's currently being developed? Or do you have a plan in place for?
Not, we're develop, in development. We want to make sure we get the right thing and just to, to teach them, and hopefully it'll grow from there.
All right, any other questions on Mr. Bodwell's goals? No? Um, so we do have to vote to approve these goals. Um, do you want to adjust your Goal Three?
Yes, what was it?
So it's your second bullet, meeting individually with each high school senior.
So, send, provide, you know, opportunity.
Okay. Um, and just to be clear, we're voting on the goals, not the action plan. So, whatever he adjusted to the action plan is, is fine. Um, okay, is there a motion?
Move to approve the Superintendent, Superintendent Goals with update.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, report of subcommittees. So the first one that we have is the Student Outreach Subcommittee. And as, um, I mentioned earlier, George gave an update. So Mrs. Lusler is going to read it for us.
Yes. So, um, I was able to meet with the new five student, uh, Student Advisory Committee on Friday morning. Um, I have to say, I'm actually really excited. They all seemed really enthusiastic. I think George will be a great addition to our meetings. Hopefully, uh, soccer and other scheduling conflicts won't be too big of an issue. But he was really enthusiastic and requested to send me his update that I could read on his behalf. So, this is what he sent me. So I'm going to speak, it's from his first-person voice. "Good evening, I am George Baroud, Student Representative to the School Committee and a junior at the Middle, Senior High School. I'd like to provide an update on recent activities from the student perspective. Unfortunately, I am unable to attend tonight, so I will have someone read this on my behalf. Our committee has discussed that we need more student involvement in clubs and extracurriculars, so we are aiming to organize a club fair to encourage more participation. This would mean gathering two or three members from each club and sport in our school and have them speak about the club or sport they are representing. This would hopefully increase extracurricular numbers and give students a place where they feel involved, comfortable, and engaged. Additionally, all the students that I have talked to have expressed relief in how our schedule has remained the same. The concept of a different schedule has been disfavored by the student body, and I believed our, I believe our schedule should hold students as well as faculty's best interest. A change that has brought good to our school is the new pickup-drop-off system taking place at the back of the school. This modern system has significantly improved traffic flow, especially with the recent assistance of the police. Lastly, on the same topic as new systems, the new setup system in the lunch line is more convenient for line flow. Our goals for this year is to get as much student input on events, changes, and issues as possible. We believe every student should have a voice, and the Student Advisory Committee will make this possible through interviewing and talking to the students, councils, clubs, faculty, and taking action at both the Rose L. and Howard Schools as well. Thank you for your time and your support of the student voices and ideas. The Student Advisory Committee will continue to work hard and ensure our community grows stronger together. If anyone has any questions, ideas, or concerns, do not hesitate to reach out. Thank you."
I'm very excited. Um, I know George from many years ago, and he's a very bright young man. So I'm really excited that he's, you know, the chair of that committee. He's a representative, he's going to be joining us. And just to kind of remind everybody, the Student Advisory Committee is, is to advise us exactly that. And so when George is here, um, he has the opportunity to speak on all of the issues from the student perspective. So, I think they have the, the right student there.
It's the five-student committee, um, really promising as a whole as well. We have two, um, young ladies who are returning that have been there before, and then three new students, including George. So it'll be great to get some additional perspective. They all seem really eager to participate, and, um, I think, I think it'll be really good. The other thing that we, as a committee, we need to, um, determine sometime in October to meet with their whole committee. So, that'll be something we'll have to schedule.
Okay. All right. Um, all right, moving on to the Policy Subcommittee. We had quite a few policies. Um, we were not able to make our schedules align to review all of them. Um, but I was able to take a look at the annual review policies. Um, and there were no major changes, so they really did not, um, warrant a full Subcommittee meeting. Um, so, there are a couple of things on here that are just kind of some compliance questions. Um, so, just running through it, actually, I'm going to make a motion first. I'm going to move to approve the following policies as written. AC, non-discrimination, including harassment and retaliation. AC dash R, non-discrimination, including harassment and retaliation. ACA, non-discrimination on the basis of sex. AC AB, sexual harassment. ACE, non-discrimination on the basis of disability. AC GA and AC GB, which are grievance procedures, and JICFB, bullying prevention. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so discussion on these. Um, AC and AC dash R, there were no changes. Um, I did correct a typo on page two of AC dash R, but there were no changes to the, the content. No change to ACA. Um, there's no change to AC AB, sexual harassment. Um, I do have a question, uh, two questions for you, Mr. Bodwell. So, first, um, there's the, the, it states in the policy that a summary of this policy must be sent to parents, staff, and students. Um, does this happen independent of the handbooks?
I would think it's included in the handbook, but I would have to check.
Okay. Um, so I think that maybe, I mean, our handbooks are very comprehensive, and they have all of these referenced. So I think it's probably there. And that was just my, my question, does it happen separately?
Now is AC?
Um, AC AB. Um, and then it also states the investigator, coordinator, and decision-maker have attended referenced, or have attended training sessions. I recall you saying that was happening last year. Okay, great. Okay, great. ACE, non-discrimination on the basis of disability, there are no major changes. The word accommodation was changed to modification in several spots. So not a major change, no changes to the grievance procedures, and there were no changes to the bullying prevention policy. Again, I have a couple of compliance questions here. So the policy states that the superintendent shall receive a monthly report of instances of bullyings. Is this happening?
I do meet with them regularly. We get information.
So, so it does stand a monthly report of the instances. And then my question would be, does this report include substantiated reports or are, or does it include in only substantiated reports or are unsubstantiated reports in there as well?
Substantiated.
Okay, so I look forward to this process being tightened up a little bit, especially with the new digital forms. I think this will be a little easier to share with you. And I would like to see at some point, just kind of not a, not student information, but a number, a number of how many reports are we seeing? How many are substantiated? How many, you know, what are these, these instances? And so that we as a committee can see whether or not it's improving over time.
Correct. So we have to report all information to Desi, part of the India report.
Okay. So actually, if you could get that information to us, that would be great. If it's been reported to Desi, we should be able to pull it up pretty quick. And then one other thing the policy does say is, an annual written notice of relevant sections will be given to parents and students in age-appropriate terms. So I know, you know, again, it's in the handbooks. I know I signed off on it in Aspen, so it's in there. But I want to know how this information is being provided to students in age-appropriate terms.
We did trainings last year, the Mark trainings.
Assembly of Mark through Bridgewater State. And we were using those resources, I guess, because they were.
And then I think we had staff trained, so they did a train, the trainers. Is that correct? Okay.
Our counselors.
Okay. Great. Does anyone have any other question on those policies?
No.
Okay. Good. So with no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
So moved. So we're going to hold all of the remaining policies. It's IKFE, competency determination, IKF, graduation requirements, GBC, gifts to and solicitation by staff, JJ, student fundraising activities, KBE, relations with parent booster organizations, ECAB, access to buildings and grounds, and KI, visitors to schools. Oh, we have two more. EFBA, school food and nutrition, meal modifications, and KBG, parent advisory council. I do want to make a motion to open EB safety program and EBC emergency plans to add to our docket to review. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, these are just being opened for review in comparison to the crisis management protocol. Any further discussion there?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Okay, the only other subcommittee that I have note here are capital budget and facilities with an update on the middle, senior, high school camera and keyless entry system. I know those went in over the summer.
Yes.
So if you want to provide a.
And I can provide some of the details and I'd love Mrs. Page to say a few words because I know she loves them, but just some of the details are up there. We added 49 physical cameras with over 100 video streams, a lot of them are the two or the three-way cameras. So again, you can see where we had 39 feeds previously, so a lot of very important areas were left out of coverage areas. So we're covering now common areas, the football field, the stands, also the parking lot, stairwells are also covered. The feeds are excellent. I have access to them and can view them. It's 30-day footage retention, so that's a good length of time for investigations. And the platform is very easy, you just plug in the numbers. We also have added a key fob system, replacing the badge system, so all staff have those. If a staff loses it or no longer works for us, we can just disable that key fob. The athletic hallway, previously there was not a key fob, there was not, the door wasn't, wasn't electrified, so that was added, which is a safety and security, especially coming back late at night. And if someone knocks on the door, you're on visibility, so you need to be able to access that.
So it's no longer a physical key?
No, there's still a physical key, but I think we've probably collected the keys.
Yeah, as the fobs are being handed out, they're collecting the keys.
And the fobs are compatible at Spring Street, creating a unified access control system. And what we're looking to do is take the integrated door system at Howard and put it onto the same system. Currently, the front door does not lock, so it's a priority for us. We've already agreed to make that, add that to be fixed as soon as possible. I don't know if I want to say anything.
No, I would just say shout out to John Collins for all his hard work behind the scenes of the camera. I know a lot of times, he's one person and he has a lot of hats. And I know a lot of times people get frustrated, you know, because there is only one John, but he did a great job. And our cameras, the quality is fabulous and really you can't get lost in the building anymore. So they're everywhere, aside from inside the bathroom.
And it really was a safety and security concern. And I, again, this is a thing we thank the public for because it was a capital budget item. And, you know, the police are very happy. We even got a camera at Roselle down the central hallway, the connecting hallway, did not have one in the last project, so we installed one there. So we are really, for the four buildings, we have really great coverage now, which is just good.
Shout out to Chris Packard, the SRO. He walked the building with all of us. It was John, the administration, just making sure that we covered every, you know, you know, we live it, so we are the ones looking at the cameras. So, you know, we, the whole group went around, so it was, it was really done well. It's, it's fabulous. So thank you.
Good, that's great. Fantastic, it'll help with the bullying investigations as well.
Absolutely.
I live it in a middle, in a, in a middle high, middle school and a high school and, you know, you don't see what happens in all ways. That is where it happens, so.
Yeah.